I'd like to welcome everybody to South Beach Town Council Meeting Wednesday, February 7th, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chamber. Onto the agenda. Agenda item number one, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Shenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lozo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to agenda item number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, for our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to agenda...
Four.
Four. Citizens forum, are there any citizens that would like to speak at this time to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda? If not, moving on to five. Presentation, utility billing, solid waste and disposal, water and sewer. Hannah Prescott, Rayburn Consulting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Why are we here this evening and why having a special town council meeting when we have a meeting on Monday? It really is because of the time sensitivity when it comes to our solid waste and disposal billing programs that we have to institute to be ready for April 1st. So first, I'd like to thank Steve Gregoire from the Water Department, who also served on the curbside collection committee, because he was the one that put the town, myself, in contact with Hannah and Rayburn Consulting relative to having me go in for a presentation on water and sewer billing and a transition to the current practices that we have. And I think I brought those forward at several meetings. So as part of those conversations, when I met with Rayburn Consulting and Hannah and Steve and Rich and the team, they presented some information to us as to what the thought process was with water sewer billing and how we made transition and some of the issues that we have on a regular basis with our current Munis system, specifically when it comes to the time consuming process to create bills, to change out accounts, the lack of service and response from Munis. And then as part of that conversation, it came up that we would be possibly able to create our curbside collection or a solid waste collection billing through this integration into a new system. So when we took a look at that, we were running parallel trying to get Munis on board to provide us information and be able to build out what we needed to do for accounts and the like. And we were not getting any response. We had Victor, who was also part of the team, contacting them and with no response. So we developed and worked with Hannah to work with Rayburn Consulting and the team. And it really has been, and I'm very grateful for all the people that have worked on this, and I don't want to forget anybody, but there have been key people in this process. Hannah, who went over to the DPW as the interim operations, and certainly she is not interim by any means, took the lead on this and has coordinated this because we have so many different projects going on. She really has taken as the team lead and worked as an important person in this and worked a lot of time. Francine's here tonight. Francine has provided a lot of information, has worked closely with us, our assessors. I can't say enough about the team approach that we have going forward. So out of this was a development of a request for proposals for a new utility billing system. And what we have here this evening is the results of that request for proposals. And I'm very grateful for Rayburn Consulting being part of this. And hopefully, we have a further relationship with them when we talked about last week about some of the other issues that we have with our software, with Munis and other solutions that we may look to the future. But for right now, it's critical that we get our curbside billing online for April 1st. And through this process, we will get there with the individuals that we have working with us and the team that we have. So I'll turn it over to Hannah now for the presentation.
Ms. Prescott.
Thank you. And thank you for all being here tonight. I know that this was a special town council meeting, and it's really great to stand in front of you all and be showing you what we've been working on and what hopefully will get us to where we need to be with curbside so that we can bill. We have been working, well, Water and DPW has been working with Rayburn, and Rayburn has been assisting since we did our Itron integration for the water meters and getting Utility Cloud integrated as well for our work orders and asset management, which all ties into billing, which got us to where we are today, knowing that we were in a dire situation. Again, Munis was not working with us and not responding, so we were lucky enough to be able to add on to their services to get this RFP done. Extensive review of the bids, that's what you're going to see tonight, and you're also going to see the plan for implementation. April 1st is very soon. Should everything go smoothly tonight, we will have kickoff tomorrow morning. I already have it in my calendar, so we're ready to hit the ground running. Just to echo Jack, a huge thank you to lots of other staff. Francine has done a ton for months on this, way before I was on this project, so a shout out to all of them. And now at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Rayburn Consulting, and we'll show you what we've got, and then we'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Good to see everybody here. My name is Drew Hatz. Anne-Marie Ronan is the founder and CEO of the company. And just briefly, Anne-Marie set up AMI Systems, billing systems all over the country, and then decided to set up a company in Massachusetts. It is a WBE here in Mass that is focused on helping utilities do what you need to do. So I'm going to dive into this. There's a lot of paperwork here. We are planning on moving quickly. I want to give you the documentation for transparency. We will stop at any time, but we are not planning on going detail by detail through all this. So please stop accordingly, okay? I'm assuming you guys don't want to stay here all night. That's why I'm saying that. So this is an overview. What we want to do is kind of say like, okay, what's the context of why we're here, what we're doing? So you guys have an urgent need to get your utility billing curbside. The town was trying to get this resolved over nine months ago with your current vendor, and due to what we see as a standard process in that mode, created a crisis. So what we did is explore the options. What are the pain points? Can it be resolved? What our job is, is we love to fix what's already there, and then if not, we want the documentation of why you're making a change. So we worked into that. We worked with the town administration, the people that we were on this team with to figure out what needs to be done and how quickly can we do it. So for us, our job is to help utilities be more efficient, and we are always looking at the ROI. Sometimes there's an opportunity that something is broken and you have to fix it, but is it a better product? Or are you just building a new bridge and you just got to get across to the other side? So in this case here, what we're going to show is not only are you guys fixing something that's broken, the town, the efficiencies that your workers are going to have from this, and directly your townspeople on a variety of benefits. This is actually going to be a fantastic project. Next time, we would like that we have a little bit more time, but we made it happen to meet your deadlines. So for us, what we do, we help people do this. These are current projects that we have in the Northeast, anywhere from Yonkers, Manchester. The number sizes the amount of people. These are people that are switching systems for one reason or another. Several of them are actually leaving the system you're leaving. So it is, you're not the first to do it. So what we do in this process is we meet with the stakeholders based on administration, field personnel, billing personnel, financial. And this is how our process works. We work in a very holistic way. Then we document the process on a high level, you know, how it all fits together, which we're going to show you. And then we draft out the requirements and iterate that with the town and each stakeholder to make sure that everyone is being heard and that there's no surprises. Our job is to eliminate surprises, and that includes change orders. So we developed a ranking system that is very important in your particular system and that the people that are bidding have done that exact same thing. Our job is to mitigate risk, so by showing that they've done something similar or exact shows higher scoring than somebody that says, "We're going to figure it out." And then we also met with the stakeholders and the personnel that are going to be using this. We had them review deep demos, up to three hours, with each one of the bidders to say, "How does this work? Does it work like it would help you?" And so we had a rating system on how that worked. And then we tabulated all this, and then we did an analysis that we're going to show There's a lot of questions. Again, the due diligence I talked about, and the town did review the contracts before any of this to make sure that their contract terms are there. And then we make a recommendation based off of what you guys see. So this is a high level of how a utility section of a town bills, okay? The meter, MXU, AMR, meter reading system, that's your meters. That's how you get your information so you can create a bill, and that goes into your billing system. And then you have work orders, your field guys are getting, your asset management and your financial system, like how do we get the bills out, your payroll, all of that. So this is how we look at a system, and how do they talk to each other or not talk to each other? In this particular case, I know the lighting's a little off, but what we're showing here is your meter reading system in blue is Itron with the associated meters, and what is in, we'll call it a beige, is your Munis system. And then your work orders and your asset management is an integral part of how your field operations and service is done. And what this, we want to call out, we go, there's some additional documentation. Your existing utility billing system does not talk to your work order systems, which creates a double entry paperwork, and it is basically one of the most inefficient ways to do it. That was caused by your existing system. And then your work orders and your asset management is in a separate system. We'll call that, it's Utility Cloud, but we'll give them names as we go on.
If I may?
Yes.
The portion that's under Munis?
Yep.
Further down the presentation, is that to be eliminated?
What we're doing, so the, thank you, good point. So the Munis software, the bulk of it, is actually taxation and Board of Education. And what they did over years is they plugged on different modules. So you have a utility billing module that will actually be shut off, and all of the accounting and taxation and everything like that, it will not be touched. Okay? And that's going to be a critical thing of how do we make them talk afterwards, so we'll go into that. So what our system is showing is basically what your question just was, in taking out the utility billing, but the customer portal. And we're not going to go into too much here, but your customer portal and how your customers are going to see their usage, pay their bills, and their history is going to be night and day. It's a fantastic system. And the key thing is, is like I pointed out, that red arrow will now talk to each other. You will eliminate all of those work orders. And we are talking, in some cases, administration work. You're talking like 30% of people's busy work and tracking and accountability. So this is just a 100% improvement. So diving into what we looked at, so the first thing we do is we figure out the pain points. Your pain points were not just the curbside. The curbside was the catalyst of like, "We have to do something." So before you make a switch, you need to, you know, analyze all of what is your current problem so that we can select the right system that will address a majority, or if not all of those new problems, to get something that's fantastic, right? So what we did is we looked through, I'm not going to go through, you have a lot of pain points, they're in your documentation, and it just, it's a lot. This is a very inefficient system in the sense that in some cases, you are looking at, on different processes, a 40% efficiency to do certain things. You know, these aren't incremental. This is big benefits to the town. And again, the customer payment portal, or the payments themselves, how they're done. And again, I know you guys have this, but if you had something in particular, I'm just moving fast for time, but I'll stop at anything. The billing processing on how you guys are forced to do it now, if we actually showed you how it was done and what your people needed to do to get bills out, you would think we were joking. That is, you're talking almost a month, it's over a month, it's 45 days to get a bill out, which realistically should be a file transfer, review, send to the print. It's taken you guys 45 days, and it's not your people. It was the process that they were forced to do. The reporting is massive in the sense of, I'm not going to geek out on you guys here. Data is the difference between getting something done and being a supercharged aspect. You guys are not getting any of that data. Any report that you needed for what we would, your financial, your people would consider basic, you know, KPIs, key performance indicators to run a department, if we showed you what they needed to do, you wouldn't believe it. And if you need a report created because you come up with something new, maybe you have a financial consultant that comes in and auditing says you need to do something, you're looking at between $5,000 and $15,000 each report you need to do. Now you're going to be able to do it on your own for free. Service work orders, we touched on. The vendor support that you guys were experiencing was, I realistically don't even want to go on record saying how bad it was, your people can tell you, but when I say eight to 10 to 14 months for a response, that's not an exaggeration. And the big thing is seamless, the integrations of one system talking to another is literally what it does. It's think of an extension cord. Some systems are built that they do not want to talk to anybody else because they don't want you to buy anybody else's product. Everything that we're doing here is designed so that they'll talk to a new system. So the results.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Town manager, a question?
Drew, could you just elaborate? I know you kind of went through this, but I think the key point for the town council as well, and for me as a town manager, was the fact that in my five months of experience just working here through the assessment software, it's in Francine, and seeing the frustration that she has had to go through in changing billing codes and generating bills and putting new customers in through that Munis system has been very cumbersome. Could you just elaborate a little bit about what you see from the Munis side to this new system that we're going to put in?
I can speak to that. Generally, Munis is set up so that it is very labor intensive. Typically, when you log into your bank, if you want to get something, you might have a couple of tabs, but most everything is listed on one page, right? Munis has it set up so everything is hidden between, behind different tabs. So in order to look up a customer, I can, I have to know the account number, and I have to know the name. In order to be able to find that customer, I have to go through three different screens. And then if I want to look at the meter usage and find where the meter itself is, I have to go into several different screens before I can actually get to that point. So in order to have a customer call me and say, "I think there's something wrong with my meter." Well, can you go and take a picture or figure out, let's take a look at what your meter is showing you now? If you have to look up their meter ID, it's going to take you to a minimum of three different screens, a good three to, a good two to three minutes to just get around and navigate to where you need to go. In a lot of cases, what Munis has done is they've changed the interface so that it's what they think the user is going to use, but it's not intuitive in any way, shape, or form. We worked with another utility that had to add a section of their districts just to add a sewer service to them, and that was a four-month effort, and Munis wasn't able to help them with that very easily. We had to come in and help them do that. In order to test and figure out, to make sure everything worked, it was extremely cumbersome. I know that one of the things that Francine has to deal with is when the meter reads come in, Munis will show an error report that prevents her from moving through, even though some of those errors are just, they're just flags. It's not an actual error. It's a flag that this customer has used more than they did the last time they were billed. Well, during the summer, we would expect that, but Munis doesn't have those seasonal logic built into it to be able to look at it and say, "Well, it's the middle of July and they're irrigating, so there's more usage to be expected." So to be able to clear all of those out before she can go through the billing process, it takes a good amount of time for her to deal with all of that. And then it gets into different warnings and errors that have to be cleared out. And this is all because it's not an intuitive logical component. Everything is hardcoded and hard programmed into the backend. So if we want to make a system change and have them say, "Let's look at the last three months for the same time last year," it can't be done that way. It has to be done the rolling 12 months or something of that nature. Everything is hardcoded.
One thing to bring up is Anne-Marie said one utility that was having a problem with their sewer, they're changing. They're doing exactly what you're doing, and they will be connecting to Munis's accounting side, but disconnecting. So you guys are trendsetters, we'll say. The, as far as the efficiencies, one of the people that we just helped leave Munis to go to this system that you guys have selected, they had four customer service, they had budgeted a fifth because they needed it, they implemented the new system that you guys are getting, they cut it to three and reallocated and did not do a higher. That's the level of efficiency. So, and we're not selling you the software, so it's not like we just do by what the reality is and how you're going to do it. Did we cover, and I see another question.
Yeah, from my viewpoint, I just think it's important because I know the frustration on our staff, and Francine's the only person that does water sewer.
Yep.
So it's a level of that complexity that we see over and over again, which led to the conversations that you had in the, and just for the council, the impetus was that we had this curbside, and if we're going to make a change, now is the time, why we're looking at this whole program. It's not just curbside, it's water sewer, and then the workflows that maybe Steve can articulate when it comes to, I don't know, what their plans are on the water side for asset management and utilities and all that.
Counselor Rivas?
So, and I appreciate that. Thank you for all of this work and everybody who worked on it. My question is around customer and resident, like interfacing. Are you going to talk about user friendliness on that end and sort of like, it is difficult for people to navigate when they're trying to pay their bills online, so I'm familiar with that, but just trying to give a sense to residents on how that this will change their experience when they're engaging, when they're trying to pay their bills, what information, are they going to have an easier experience understanding what they're reading or the information they're trying to get, and then speak to sort of customer wait time, like if they call?
Yep. So the one thing I'll just, Anne-Marie, when she was describing what a person on your side has to deal with, with some basic questions, when she said two minutes, she wasn't kidding. Two minutes on the phone waiting for somebody to get some basic stuff is, you're not happy, right? And so your customers are going to get just quicker, easier answers, it's going to be easier on the folks on this side. On the customer service portal, you'll, we might say UI, that means user interface, and we might say UX, that's the user experience, right? When you guys, whoever here is on Facebook, you go to Facebook, it's easy to use. That's called design. If you have a really good bank portal and you can quickly see your accounts and transfer money or pay bills, that's a good design. Your new one is going to be far easier. We did not do screenshots. Realistically, if we were to do like a demo, we'd probably lose like an hour. But your staff reviewed these, and we'll show those results of how it was just night and day. It is an improvement, and the one thing that I do want to call out is, in some areas, you're going to be literally looking at up to 60% improvement. Another department might need to do a 2% more work. So what, the net gain is not even close, but for the customer, they win.
One of the things that, on the new system or the system that was the highest scoring, for a customer service representative, when you look up a customer accounts, all of their last five payments are on the same screen as their last five bills, as their last, all of their transactions, their last five payments, their usage, their metering information, everything is in a single screen. So there's that aspect to it. But the other aspect is that if a customer service representative needs to look up account, an account, they can know a portion of the person's name, the full name, an account number, an address, a parcel number. You can use any piece of data to search for that customer and get it within an instant. On the customer side, your customers who are actually paying their bills, they're going to be able to see, not only is all of their transaction history going to be displayed for them, they'll be able to click in and see what their bill was, so they'll be able to see exactly the same bill that was mailed to them, and they'll be able to make their payments. And there's more options for payment processing as well. So they'll have the ability to make a phone payment, they'll have the ability to make a text payment, credit card, ACH, all of those other avenues. So your ability to give your customers more options and a more user-friendly experience is much improved.
Thank you.
Counselor Shinya?
Thank you.
Hold on, Counselor.
I've got a little...
You want to add to something that we were just talking about?
Just a little bit more fun detail for you. While we were reviewing these proposals, we asked not only to see what will the customer see, not, we didn't see just what Francine will see, we saw what the customer will see. We compared it to, we had a staff in the team pay their bill and show us the clicks, and we compared the clicks, and it is also more efficient. But this is a new program, so we are going to have to have some people getting logins, and there's going to be a learning curve. So the other thing that I made sure to ask about is about media, and we as a town and as a project manager have a responsibility to help educate the citizens. We know we've got a couple of different areas we can provide resources in, and I've spoken to these proposed vendors specifically about what media they can provide to assist us. So we're ready as part of the implementation to onboard the citizens and provide that assistance, okay?
Great, thank you.
Counselor Shinya?
The customer portal, I guess that's what I'm going to call it.
Yep.
When the customer uses the portal to pay a bill, then there's going to be in all probability a fee related to that payment? Now, when that person makes the bill, pays the bill, will it immediately reflect on the account? Or is it going to wait till a day or two? Because that's some of the biggest complaints I hear now, is that they'll go online to pay a tax bill, for instance, and they'll look it up, and there'll be three days later that's still showing that it's not paid, and the individual has paid it. So it's instantaneous. Okay.
So a great example. My mother didn't pay her bill. I never got notice, and all of a sudden, a work order was created. There's a truck rolling to go do shut offs. I talked to my mom, she explains to me what's on the table. I'm like, "You got to be kidding me." Click, pay. It's going to send a message to the guy in the truck that it was paid, cancel the shut off. No one will be called. No one needs to go back and forth of what it is today, and where's John, who's this, who's that? It's gone. The efficiency of that level of instantaneous is right there. And the fees for the portal, the fees are only your typical bank fees and transaction fees, and I can't remember...
It's a convenience fee for using a credit card, which is typical, and I believe it has now. It's the same as what you have now.
Yeah.
And as far as the payments are concerned, that is something that even the customer service representatives will be able to see. So if a customer goes online, makes a payment, it will show up within seconds on the customer service side so that there is a pending payment that has been made. So if this were a situation where it's a check payment or an ACH, and it need, they need to verify funds, it's going to show that the pending payment was made, but if the funds get reversed, it will automatically reverse that and send notification to the customers and to... and to the billing clerk, and it will automatically add the non-sufficient funds fee to it. So all of that is going to be automatic, and it's all pretty seamless.
So this is going to be the same for the water sewer and trash, am I correct?
Initially, so because of the fast track, and we'll show this a little, the trash billing is April 1st.
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
Water sewer is November.
Correct.
But it will be, when we built the spec, we put $1,000 a week penalty to make it clear to the vendor that this was extremely important to the town, and we were able to do that based on the fast track mentality that we have. We have a kickoff meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM, and literally, I think this meeting got moved a couple of days, right? The vendor has agreed to not delay the date of April 1st by two days, but has said you have to delay the penalties by two days. Like, that's how tight this is. So if we don't give them a response in 24 hours, they actually move it. So that's how tight we got this, to make sure you guys get it.
Now, for the customer to use, is there an ability to make partial payments?
Yep.
Yes.
So to prevent a shut off, or auto work something up with the town?
It's based on your, the town, your current processes on however you do that will be transferred to the existing, the new system, and it also gives an opportunity for you guys to take a look at how you're doing it to see if you can improve it, because it's going to be so much easier, there can be some decisions there.
And that's something that you wouldn't want to necessarily set up automatically right off the bat, but your customer service team will have the ability to approve based on your processes.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Dell?
Thank you, Chair, to you. First question, so if you have a multiply bill, like three, four bills, you can add them on the same account, either of different addresses or-
One building owner, three different properties?
Different account number, you can just log in and make all payments once, because I think the software we have now, we can't do that, but Sturbridge can do that. They will say, add them to the cards, but Sturbridge don't have that now.
Yes. On that, the beauty of the new systems are, when you install a legacy system like Munis, you're carving it in stone. Once it's set up, you're done. The newer systems, if something's set up a certain way and you want to change it a little bit, it's not an act of Congress, you'll be able to do it very easily. So, those nuances.
Just to add, to reassure, we have a varied population here in Sturbridge. We have people who are landlords, business owners, they rent, we have snowbirds that go down south and they have to turn off their services. We thought about all of these populations when we went through the bid results and when we drafted the RFP. We thought about who walks in, who calls to ask questions, what are the once-a-year issues that we have. So we tried to have every contingency addressed, to think about all of the different types of people in our population so that we can serve them efficiently, effectively, and get done what we need to do. So, great questions, I just want to reassure you on that.
One more question. So you say the system automatically sent the technician, if he go on to shut the service off. So we have to provide these guys on the road, computer or iPad as well? Are they included?
Existing tools that they have, they have iPads and tablets they use for their meter reading and with Utility Cloud. This is a web-based system, and so any place where they can access the web, they can access the system. And that's the same for anybody in the office. So if you have somebody that is not, you know, God forbid we have another quarantine, people can still get their jobs done without having to come into the office.
Thank you. Councilor Mike Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just for those residents who are still doing things the old-fashioned way, I'm going to presume that you can still pay your bills by writing a check, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
You can actually make it to where, if it's split ownership, one person gets a bill and the other person gets an email, in the same account.
And they can walk in and they can pay with a check in person like they do now, if they do, or they can send a check and mail it in.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? And again, we can backtrack at any point, I'm going to keep going.
I think Councilor Daniel had a question.
Okay, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Did I hear correctly, you said we're going to be dropping a module out of Munis?
Yes.
To the manager, does that mean that we're going to realize a cost savings?
Well, we will eventually. We're going to have to probably run Munis a little bit into the next quarter because of the transition for water sewer. But, the benefits of doing this far outweigh that cost right now. But yes, we will be dropping modules and looking at more efficiencies when it comes to Munis.
Thank you.
And just, we spent a lot of time on customer portal, and I really wish that we could do a demo like you see, because it really truly is amazing about what, having paid my water bill online and that customer experience, and then looking what this proposal shows you, and the amount of data and information that, as a customer, that I'm going to be able to see, that we're going to be able to see, is night and day. And then from our staff viewpoint, the processes of Francine, and Drew and Emery have worked with Francine for a number of years, so they're very familiar with our water system and our water sewer. So, they are very experienced in what the processes we have, and that's why we're very comfortable with this consultant and moving this forward because of their knowledge of our system and working with Steve. And they give kudos to Steve about Utility Cloud and we're super users and all this stuff that they tell us about. We are really pioneers, I guess.
Yeah.
Pioneers. There we go. And moving forward with this type of billing. But Francine was very involved in this, and we talked about, I have to do a final bill for an attorney, for closing, and I do this all in Munis, I have to do this computation, and then the attorney says, oh, we're not closing, you know, the deal fell through, she has to do all this backwards, Munis. And when we looked at this system of what you do, that information doesn't change, it was click a box, the owner reverts, reverse closing, it was done in like, three minutes where it's very time consuming for all that. So, the efficiencies that we're going to gain and the information that we're going to be able to have readily available. I know just my limited experience in Munis, for me to try to find the town council budget just to find out what bill, it's click, click, well, I want to go and find out what 23 was, now I've got to back out, then I've got to go back in, it takes a lot of time, and it's not user-friendly. But that information that, as our staff will be able to look at, not only is it the current owner, but it will show the historic data of who owned that, right on that page, it's right on this page that says, hey, you got it, and it's a bunch of clicks. So, efficiency-wise, it's good, and we'll go through the points on this, I guess.
Councilor Dell?
Thank you, Chair, through you. One more question, I'm going to go back to the bill. When you log in, so when you added multi bill, like a bunch of them, is still one charge, or it's going to be, on each bill will be charged? Let's say, example checking, because I own property in Sturbridge and Sturbridge, so I can add it to three property and I can still only pay the 50 cents fee because I'm using the system. So here in Sturbridge, that program, we're going to add it 50 cents on each bill, or no, just one charge for using the system?
So it's an account basis? So your account, but are you talking about like, your usage, if you make a payment, is it going to be individual payment fees?
Example, I have two property, correct? I have two bills. So, in Sturbridge, I can add it both of them on the same payment, and at the same time, and pay one-time fee for the system, 50 cents. In Sturbridge, I can do only one bill, and I have to do 50 cents, 50 cents, 50 cents. So that system we are providing, I can add it the bill, like Sturbridge altogether, and make one payment, 50 cents? Or no, on each bill I got to pay, regardless of one payment or 20 payment, it's going to be on how many bill I'm going to add it to this?
I believe it's a transaction fee, not necessarily a billed fee. So if I'm paying two bills, I'm making one transaction, on the backend, there's two transactions to, you know, separate it and allocate it to those two properties or those two bills. But for you, it's one transaction on your credit card, right? So it's per transaction.
Yeah. And that's a great point, and the key thing is, is the billing software isn't charging you extra for that, that's the key thing. So as long as your current billing software here cannot do that, that's why you need to go into each one. This lets you do that. Thank you.
Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. You may have mentioned this already, but is there any way that the town can go through that process via like a PowerPoint or a video example for residents themselves, from login to, in that way, it's available either on a website or we can push it out through cable access?
Hannah had mentioned that earlier. We're actually, we're not, I don't want to take every time, but we build entire videos, the documentation to show what you'll be able to post on the website, what you can post on the portal, and what you can email to your base. And another thing is too, is, look, this actually has ridiculous benefits to you guys. So for example, why do I sign up on your portal and not get an email? Is there much benefit to me? No, it's not, it's not a great portal. What's my advantage? The new portal is going to make it to where I actually have a reason to do this experience. Now, one of the things that's important when we pick a billing system, you guys are in the next two or three or four years going to end up budgeting a meter change because your meters are getting to a point. At that point, with the system that you have, I can be in Florida, I can be a landlord, and I can set the alerts of how much water my house uses on a day. And I can get an alert while I'm on vacation that there's been 24 hours of continuous use at my house, which means I probably got a leak or something's running. That's where you guys are headed in a very short period of time, and this system is seamless to that. So, what we do is, you guys said, hey, we need a car or a truck, well, what we also found, you know, in looking at the holistic approach, well, in a few years, you're going to buy a boat. So we didn't buy a truck with no trailer hitch, we made it to where this is going to carry you guys, you know, we do these for 10 to 15-year cycle.
And just, our goal is to make it so that the Sturbridge staff, this doesn't become a huge burden to them to go through this implementation. And so, anything that we can do to help alleviate the additional questions that are going to come in and help educate the consumer base, that's what we're going to do to help you guys with. Because we want to alleviate as much of that as possible so you can do what you need to do on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Councilor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Are there any special concerns for people who pay their bills through mortgage payments, for instance, and have an escrow account?
I didn't hear that. The escrow payments?
Yes.
That has no effect. So if it's an ACH or however it's currently done, as long as your bank handles those kinds of payments, the portal will. And the portal is, the company is Invoice Cloud, that handles that, but it's based on what you guys want to do. So as long as it's a normal payment through a savings account even, it'll take it.
And just for clarification, this is only going to be utilized for your utility billing and curbside. So any of your property taxes or anything like that will still be done separately, and it's my understanding that those are still different interfaces within the payment portal that you have anyway. What this will do is allow you to streamline all of your utility billing, get one bill, make one payment, and do it much faster and help your customers or your staff provide better service.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilor Shinya?
Can this eventually eliminate Munis altogether?
This piece, no, but what I'm about to show you, you could. What we're doing is, you know, what we look at in different systems, there's no answer. It's not like, as you look at different systems, it's like, why didn't we buy that one? It's the one everyone should have bought. Every town and city does things differently. So sometimes what's great for you guys is not great for Natick, for example, right? Or vice versa. So, what we currently have is, you guys had a need because of curbside, so it was broken. And like I said, it's going to turn into a fantastic thing, okay? That was the catalyst. What we look at doing is, we want to make sure that whatever is done, when this system is up and running and the machine is turning, what needs to be done? And is Munis and the town side, is it good enough? Then let's leave it alone. If it's not, then we'll look at some possibilities to do it. But all change, you know, costs money, costs energy, and so we want to make sure that the value prop for you guys is very clear. The answer is yes, but we have no benefit of you guys going through a whole bunch of work and spending money. So if we can save you that, we'll do that once this machine is working. So, beginning of next year, when this thing is working and all the bugs are worked out and everybody's happy, then we can look at this piece and say, should we replace it? Is there an advantage to the town? And so that would be, we would recommend looking at that January, February.
So potentially, this program could do the tax bills, excise taxes?
Not this one, but we integrate-
Great, okay.
Yeah, there's best of breed.
What this system will do is, it's setting the foundation so that you can integrate with nearly any other system very smoothly and very easily. Munis does certain things well, so we've talked a lot about what it's not doing well, but it does do a lot of things that are very good. But it doesn't play nicely with other systems to allow a seamless integration where everything runs nicely in the background. And so if you're going to consider something like that, then you want to set the foundation so that your utility billing can connect to, either continue to connect to Munis or any other system that you want to go to.
Because I've been here a short time, and I have not heard one good thing from the employees about Munis, at all, at all. Customer service, anything like that. So I would hope that your customer service will be much better than what we have with Munis. And I hate to say, we did spend a lot of money on Munis, but as far as I'm concerned, it's time to throw it out the window and start moving somewhere else.
One of the examples during the demonstrations was when the gentleman doing the demonstration, there's a chat feature. So if Francine were to have an issue or a concern, or anybody using the system would have a question, they can simply chat, and they have a requirement to respond within the next 30 seconds. And so they will get a response for an initial response, hey, let me see what I can do to help you right away. If they are not able to help with them right away, they have 24 hours to help them resolve the issue, based on level of criticality.
The company that we're going to show you is, they're based out of Pennsylvania, they were founded there, all their developers are in the same building, and all their customer service representatives are in the same building. They own it. And so when somebody has a question, they literally can walk to the back of the building and talk to them. So your customer service is going to go very different than what you have, but great point. So, I'm going to go into the bid results because I want to show you some other things and that might answer some additional questions. This is the high-level scoring in the specification, it broke it out, and we're going to show you details, but again, we'll go through. It was based on the experience of the key project staff, the ability to complete the scope that was specifically laid out for your town. And on that note, tying to Munis and tying to Utility Cloud, your asset management, you had to be able to do that, and you had to have experience in it. And then your project approach was basically what's your project management approach for this type of integration, and then the cost proposal. So, that was based on percentages, and we'll go into that. The clear winner, and we'll go through it, and it was also on how it was rated by your staff, was Munilink, that's the one out of Pennsylvania. So, this page goes through the experience and the key staff project, there's not really a variance here. The qualifications had it to where every bidder that was here was an experienced company with references, so we weren't too concerned about this. And on the technical functionality, this is where we started to get some breakout specifically on tying into your existing systems. And as I said before, and I'm going to say it, our job is to mitigate your risk. So that's, sometimes we seem like we're being nitpicky on certain features, it's because we do this all the time and we want to make sure it goes smoothly. And then this was your assessment by your employees, the Munilink was given a 92 to the next one at an 82. So it was the user experience, the functionality was pretty clear of who the winner was, based on pricing, functionality, everything we had done. on pricing, functionality, everything we had done. And then the ability to scope, again, this, this also had to do with what they had, their experience. MuniLink was the only one, by the way, who has a working functional API to plug in directly to Utility Cloud. That's a major issue. So only one company had that. And then, just, you know, one of the companies said in the response, we can probably do that. That was literally what they wrote in the response. So, and again, based on how the project approach is going to be done. The cost analysis was pretty tight. The, the outlier was the one bidder in green that was very low. They had a, on long-term, if you stayed with them, their escalation was more than double everybody else's. So they would catch up. The higher one didn't score as well. That was basically number two on all categories was a significant enough gap to, you know, especially since it didn't come in first. And, I'm sorry.
To add, in your packets, you received some, a similar graphic that also had the MS4 implementation. I wanted to show that to you guys. It's not in this presentation, I apologize. We do plan to potentially implement MS4 billing or just another billing option down the line. And if we do that, the cost will increase slightly, but we will still remain cheaper with MuniLink than the more expensive option. So I just wanted to highlight that we looked at this for the whole term, long-term, for the longevity of this implementation to make sure that we're getting the bang for our buck and not blowing the cost out of the water down the line.
Very key point, it was expandability. So even functionality that you guys don't have, we had them price out. What we don't want to do is have you guys implement something and in two years, ask them for a price. We've lost all negotiating power at that point. So we did that in the spec. So the next steps, you know, kickoff meeting is tomorrow and the, the go-live is April 1st. We personally take our deadlines very serious. We're a consulting firm that actually helps people select it, helps them through the integration, helps them go live, helps them do a training. So we don't do a tail light guarantee. We are here, the people we work with, we want to make sure that everybody is happy. And then the go-live for the water and sewers, November 1st. Yep.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How long will you be here for?
Excuse me?
How long will you be here for?
For us?
Yeah.
Well, basically what we do is we, we have a very hands-off approach. So it's kind of like phone a friend. If the, we will basically get the project moving, make sure everybody that's on the town side, you're the project manager for this, correct? Right? So you and your team will make sure that they, they get it and then we're, we're going to step back. And then what, we will be copied on all correspondence because I can tell you the amount of acronyms and data configurations that the team is, your team is about to get hit with, they're just, they've never done it before. So we can do a quick zoom and, and bang it out and help them out. So what normally would take them four hours, we can do it for 15 minutes.
And we'll provide search support as well so that if you're, for example, you know, you've got tax bills coming due, nobody has time to pull all the data or to do any analysis and to do some data corrections in order to get the billing system or keep the billing system running. So we will step in and help with that and augment those resources so that your staff can continue what, to do what you need to do on a daily basis.
Yeah. Thank you. And with that, the data, you know, look, we're on the geeky side, so we're bringing up the data. So you have all this data of every account you've ever had, going back years. And as meters gets changed out and someone changed the account, somebody made a mistake, right? What we do is we scrub and do a forensic audit of that data. That data is now clean. When the new billing company comes in, they take your old data and they stick it in the new system, then they start that configuration. Well, all those anomalies, just think of it as, you know, jamming up the pump. They don't know what's wrong. They don't know if it's the pump, they don't know what's in the water. And so they have to reverse engineer and troubleshoot every anomaly. We do that upfront and it makes the process go better.
Some of that work has been done because you guys moved from KVS a few years ago. And so we came in and helped out a little bit with that. We also did an analysis to try to help streamline some of the billing when you went to the Tometra system with Itron. So your data shouldn't be in that horrible of shape, but what is going to be needed is somebody to help interpret the database structure so that when they start mapping data from one system to the other, they're putting things in the right places and so that all of the data comes over cleanly.
Yeah.
And Counselor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman, and to Counselor Adams. I know exactly where you're going because we lived through the Munis conversion because that's when we came along as councils on our first term. And this is totally different. So they, they are going to be with us as partners, but the nice thing is they're not billing us exorbitant amounts of money. They take, and I think Drew articulated in a meeting that we had because to Counselor Shenyu's previous point about Munis and all that, he's a taxpayer advocate is what he told me. So he looks at through the viewpoint of taxpayers and not wasting taxpayers' money. So they're going to be there for us as partners to make sure we get this accomplished, but not bill us to death and waste our money.
We did a system integration up in.
Am I correct in that?
Yeah, you are. I mean, actually, as you learn it and your team will know, I am, I am a consumer advocate. And I want to make sure that you guys are buying the right thing. You guys are creating a legacy. Your townspeople trust you to do the right decision. To me, that's responsible. You guys hired us, that put a lot of responsibility on us. This thing better work right and it better go smooth. That's what you paid us for. And the, the key thing is for this process, we help people, like someone could go on vacation and you guys need to do days and we'll be there. If not, and in some cases, they'll say, oh, we, we're having problems with it. We'll help them do it. You know, we, we, we are very busy. Anne-Marie started the company. We've gone from one utility to now we're over 165 and some of our bigger accounts are half a million accounts. We love working with towns that are trying to do the right thing. That's what drives us. And we, we did an integration billing system, accounting system, asset management system and payroll. It was a massive undertaking. Zero dollars in change orders, zero. We protected that utility to make sure the scope was clean because that's our job. We eliminate surprises. I shouldn't have said that because I'm probably going to hit with a $5 change order. I'm going to ruin that now. But so this here is talking about what we will be doing. We are on an as-needed basis. We have no contract that says you guys are going to pay us $50,000 to do this. It's not what it is. If you guys need us for two hours next month, that's what you'll use us for. And then again, the ongoing pieces and some of the training, what we're best known as is, is being the interpreter. You guys speak your language, you have your needs and your assumptions. The vendor has their job, their needs and their assumptions. Kind of gets misaligned. We make that to where the left hand and the right hand know what they're doing and that eliminates problems. The next step that we will be doing with you guys, that is what we do on everything, is we're going to show you, we document your current processes so that there's an understanding of what needs to be changed and what needs, what works great. The term that's used a lot, and I might be the last person in the room to know what it means, but it's called change management. Growing up, it was just documenting how you do things. Well, with attrition and how hard it is to get people, the ability to have good documentation, if you hire me to do a job, to do your billing right now, it's not fair to me or anyone you're hiring. The documentation isn't there. It's in Francine's head or Robin's head and that's it. And they're busy. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through and we map the processes. You had a neighboring town that a billing clerk walked out the door, they were not able to put out a bill for four months because no one knew how to do it and it didn't make any sense. So we will document what you're doing now so that the new billing vendor understands it and this documentation is for you guys forever. This is the level that we will be going through to show how the processes go through the systems. And we're not going to go deep on those. We will only go as deep as it needs to be to get it done. We're very good at it, so it, you know, we're efficient. Wrap up, and again, I feel, I hope we didn't take up too much here evening, but we're going to streamline the, we, Rayburnside will streamline the implementation, mitigate your risk and support the staff as needed. The great part is the bottom piece, which is what you're purchasing. That's what you're going to gain. You're going to get great customer service, customer portal transparency, you're going to empower your customer and you are going to reduce the hassles that your staff is dealing with that if you actually watched what Francine has to do and Robin does in particular, you would literally not believe it. So we're good on our end. You have the documentation. If for some reason, in the next period of time, you guys want more information, you're, you know, Hannah will email us, we'll get it to you. And if we're done, you guys are ready, tomorrow morning, we'll be getting this thing moving.
Are there any other questions?
Questions through you, thank you. Does South Ford have like backup protection for any hackers, any data loots?
Great question. So based on the cloud, this is a cloud-based system?
It is a cloud-based system and it is hosted in a, I believe it's in Microsoft Azure. And so they've got several different instances backed up in several physical locations. So everything is backed up in the cloud and they have duplicate backups.
And it will be charged on it to keep it in the cloud or just?
No.
Any, any charge for storage or?
It's updated right away. What's, we, we didn't get into the details. Your current customer now, field guy goes to check out a meter and there's a barking dog. I take a picture of the dog on my phone. Dog's going nuts. I can't go and do it. Now, the customer, the person is screaming at customer service, there's no dog. That, that gets texted to my supervisor or whatever. This is now going to go into billing system. It's there forever in the cloud. So if there's a lawsuit in three years, every picture ever taken, any documentation, any blueprint, any permit is now associated with that account. It's, it's, it's a new level. There's no charge for your usage. It's based on your accounts. So if you merged with another town and raised your account base to a couple thousand more, then they're going to say you got to pay a little bit more.
It's unlimited storage. You're not going to have to, like right now, you probably have a server somewhere in town that is hosting all of this. If you were to add another 5,000 accounts, you'd have to get another server. You'd have to incur more hardware. Right now, with this system, you will not have to add any hardware. You do not have to maintain any hardware. And in fact, your IT staff is really not going to have to do much with this at all except to help people make sure that they can access it through their browser. So it's all browser-based and Chrome, Edge, Firefox, any of those.
Safari, anything? Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Mike Eddie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Back a few slides there, you had something that said that it's starting April 1st and a $1,000 a week penalty. What is that all about, the $1,000 a week penalty?
So the $1,000, so my background was in very large construction projects for NASA and different things like that. Sometimes the penalties were literally $50,000 a day.
To who? Who would pay that?
The vendor. So what we did is we boxed in the vendor to where, oh yes, I'm going to have your roof ready by Friday. Okay, that's great. But somebody got sick, now all of a sudden you don't have a roof on Friday. We made it to where if you're late, you're going to pay me, the homeowner or the town, $1,000 a week. It was, it wasn't a ridiculous penalty. It was enough to let them know the town is very serious and it's critical.
And it was also a way to weed out those vendors that might just come in and be yes-men.
All right.
And say, yes, we can do that, we can do that. We'll get you up and live April 1st.
But not.
And then come April 1st, we're pushing it back. We didn't want to, we wanted to make sure that if there were going to be any delays caused by the vendor or because of some issues that they had, that they would be the ones to incur the penalties.
So when you did this sample or you tried, tried it out, did you do any troubleshooting to see what problems might be coming our way when we start trying to get into this system or operate it or customers using it?
So what we did is we actually had members of your staff talk to people that have recently switched to that system, MuniLink, and that are actually connected to Munis. So we got like for like and I won't speak for Hannah, but I think that what you heard was they were pretty impressed.
Yes, definitely. The demos were very thorough. We asked a lot of questions and we also asked the vendors to show us what happens if there's an issue. In the RFPs as well, we asked them to speak about their runtime and how often is their website down. Nothing was reported like what we experienced currently with Munis. I also asked about what if our customers have an issue? Do they have to call us or can they get help on their own? These vendors will help anybody. They're accessible, their response time is quick. We asked those questions of the other district that implemented this and they gave a glowing review. So I, I think this will be a really good thing for the staff and the citizens all around.
Here's something that, just to follow up on that and you write, is I remember when the cloud came out. You're not going to put, my information's not going to be on my hard drive, it's going to be somewhere? I thought it was crazy, right? Well, I'm old enough to remember when that was crazy. Now you're crazy if you have it in your, on your computer. Because what happens is your server in the town that's hosting this current system, that's unique. You have that program, you have that program only. The town next door and the exact same thing has a different one. Once you go to the cloud, when they make an update, a security update, everyone, everyone has it. And so when Facebook does an update, everyone has that update. And so you never need to pay for another upgrade. You just pay your fee.
And so I would say, and this isn't so much to you, but to the town manager, I would say that the first steps, if we want to get this going, April 1st, we need to know how many people are going to be opting into this system, how many are going to be opting out. So I think that's something that we need to do, get this letters out to the residents of this town. Who wants in? Who wants out? Let them know exactly what is going on with this system. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Adams?
Thank you. So being cloud-based, is there a subscription fee, a licensing fee? Is that built into our contract? Because I know you said it's free, but it's, it actually does cost money to have.
Yeah, yeah.
A subscription fee.
All those features are included in the subscription. That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So right now, you're paying a support contract with Munis. And that support contract basically just allows them to answer your questions in the six to nine months that it takes them to give you help. For this, it is going to give you all of regular updates. So as if, let's say for example, the, another town has a unique situation that they would like to have implemented, you're going to get access to that feature as well because it's all the same version. Everybody gets updated at the same time. Everybody receives the same features and benefits. So you're not going to, with, with Munis, I know that there are some towns that are on the 2019 version, some are on an older version, some are hosted in a little basement that's never been updated at all. So.
And, and the fee is, in this cost analysis, your annual subscription fee starts off at $29,888. That's, covers everything that the software.
I just want to make clear, there is a fee. There's probably either an annual fee or.
That's it.
That's all built into the contract though, but it's not free. It's just, it's within our contract itself.
Yeah. So when we were saying extra storage, so a lot of times you'll pay like a fee for the software, but then when you reach X amount of photos, they start charging you more. This is no extra charge, but good point. It's 29, it starts off at $29,000 a year.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shenyu?
Mr. Chairman, through the town manager. We're voting this tonight. If this gets voted tonight, this is going to come live tomorrow.
Not, not live tomorrow. Implementation.
Implementation tomorrow, I'm sorry. So we're not going to nail out anything to the, this is the program that we're going to use and that's, we're not going to wait until.
April 1st.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, through you, we have multiple projects going on when it comes to curbside. My staff is working aggressively on multiple fronts. Hannah has been leading this team when it comes to what are we doing for billing? Hannah has been leading this team when it comes to what are we doing for billing? And listen, I've been here five months, and it's been crunch time since I walked in the door for this program, because of when the call-in sender, curbside RFP went out, when it was awarded, that was all during my tenure, five months ago. Should have been done a year ago. So my team over here, led with very capable people, Steve, Hannah, Rich, Francine, Victor, Michelle's been involved. There's a whole team over here doing, how do we implement billing in a software so we can do curbside April 1? Then I have another team, Maritza, Anna, Victor, Francine, Jasmine, working on the curbside, who's going to be opting in, opting out? So that team's working on that. This team's working on this. They're working together. Then I have another team with Matt and Victor, working on OpenGov, and can we put a system in place where they can opt in and opt out? We are working crunch time every day, not to mention everything else that we have on a daily basis, to get our financial house in place. So Counselor Marketti, we are working aggressively to meet these deadlines. Maritza, and we met yesterday, and I told you that we are working on this brochure that's being developed to go out Monday, that says, here, it's a new recycling program. This is what the timeline's going to be. We'll mail out another card. I don't simply have enough staff to do all these multiple things, but we're getting it done. I cannot say enough about the team that I have in place in this town, that we have brought to the forefront to accomplish this goal. So we will get it done, but this is, this is right here, implementation, billing, they're going to bill on April 1. Whether you opt in or opt out, it doesn't matter, because the database is going to say, hey, we're built, all those parcels are going to be in place, and then as we're gathering data, who's opting out, we'll be able to click a box, because it's going to be seamless, it's going to be easy to say, oh, Jack Jovan does not want to have curbside collection button, I'm not sending a bill.
Yeah.
So there's multiple things going on, so I just want to be clear on that we're working on it.
I think we have to focus on what we are working on here tonight. There's a lot more work going on with identifying things that have to be entered and stuff, but I think we as councilors, good questions tonight, focus on this piece. It's a small piece of the bigger puzzle, and that's technology.
Thank you, Chair, through you, Mr. Town Manager. Nobody is saying you're not working hard. We're all working hard. We're all working as a team, but seems like every town manager come in, and one of the councilor ask a question, first of all, everything is rush, 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 last minute. We understand where you come from. You came to the town, nothing was there correct, thing behind, nothing was done properly. That's why we working as a team one hand. But I don't like to see when Counselor Marketti or Counselor Dow or Counselor Shinya ask a question to make the right decision for the citizen, people seem like getting mad. We're not saying you doing thing wrong or you're wrong, but we still have a right to ask, to understand, because you spent enough time with these gentlemen and ladies, whatever, working hard, and you understand the whole program. We don't. We just came here with a couple of people, and I left work, and I want enough time to understand that South Ford to be able to vote on it. So I think Counselor Marketti asked question, I think we shouldn't get mad, we should answer as much as we can, and we're all going to ask question. I'm not rushed to just vote on it. I have the whole night. Thank you.
Okay, hold on a minute. This, when I say it's a piece of the puzzle, if you want to know what else is going on with curbside pickup, take it up in another meeting. Don't waste my time and our time sitting here all night when we're dealing with the technology portion. I think what we have to do is concentrate on agenda item number six, the present station. We've already had--
They're all related, Chair.
I got the floor for a second.
They're all related.
They're all related, but they have to be put together in a way where you don't sit here for seven hours. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any comments?
If I got excited, I apologize. We are all under a great amount of time pressure, which I appreciate, and I put all the information out there. And I have met with individual councilors and given them that information to say that we're working on it. So the opt-in, opt-out, I get it. I appreciate that those cards had to go out and have to go out, okay? And it was communicated to, about our process, and I apologize if I get a little heated on that, I really do. It's a lot of passion, because failure is not an option, Counselor. And I appreciate the information. Yes, it needs to get out to the citizens, okay? So I do apologize. It just, a lot of things going on, and we are under strict deadlines. And the frustration is that, no, we'll get there. We'll get there. Everybody's working hard, we'll get there. So I apologize to Counselor Marketti and to you. You are entitled to that information. Thank you.
Anybody else want to stay here longer? Any other questions? Counselor Vivas?
Just have a quick question. On our, in our packet, the subscription fee said 31, and then the item says 29. Was it, is that just an oversight or?
So probably what you're, let me just double-check. So what's going on, if you see on your agenda too, we're not just talking about MuniLink. We have the invoice cloud integration as well. That's going to add $100 a month. What that is, is the payment gateway. I learned a whole lot about PCI compliance with this project. So there's only a certain amount of payment gateways, and then only, vendors only speak to certain gateways as well. It's all very specific. So MuniLink has three payment gateways. We were able to get quotes from one, which was invoice cloud. We were able to demo them and do some Q and As, and there is an additional fee to that. That's why there is that difference. Still, with the implementation of invoice cloud, which is seamless as well, it is still less expensive than the most expensive proposal by Koozie, and that remains below Koozie's price even with MS4 implementation. So that, sorry for the confusion on that. That's the difference.
Thank you.
And that integration with invoice cloud is what will give you the real-time view of when payments are made.
Instantaneous.
Instantaneously. So that's what's going to enable your town, your staff to see when somebody makes a payment from their home, they'll know that it was made, because it will show up as pending payment in their customer account. So for $100 a month extra, it's a little, good investment.
Thank you.
Just on the invoice cloud, we had a lot of conversations with Michelle in the treasurer collector's office about that whole process to make sure it works seamless. And I mean, we do still have some hurdles to overcome, but we will overcome them, but we're confident that this solution will work for the town.
Thank you.
There's one thing that, a couple of questions were asked, and I'm going to be very quick on this, and we do this all the time, so we're maybe skipping over some things for brevity. Imagine this is building a house. Your move-in date, in this case, is April 1st. We're digging the foundation tomorrow. Then the framing's going to be done, then the walls and the roof and whatnot. We don't need the furniture in until days before the April 1st deadline. So who opts in and opts out? We have a lot of time to get things done. And again, I'd say that's probably our fault for not breaking out the steps. We didn't want to go too deep, but basically tomorrow is the beginning of the foundation, and that will enable it to where you guys can move in on April 1st.
Any further discussion?
If tomorrow is the foundation, what we're doing right now is buying the best materials we can.
I got that about a half hour ago.
Just saying.
Well, I think, I think, any other questions by Counsel, Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the town employees for pulling it together and getting this done. I echo the town manager's sentiment about the fact that there is a lot going on in town. There are a lot of other issues as well, and I recognize that the fact that they're able to multitask the way they do. We have some great employees, and I appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Any other councilors? Just in closing, I'd just like to say, when we're talking about the software and the cloud and everything, I focused on what was in front of us here tonight. It's exciting. I'm really enthusiastic about it. And the presentation by Hannah, Anne-Marie, and Drew. Drew, you're very animated, can tell you came from the construction field, you know, and talking about penalty clause, all this, I got all that. When someone comes down and asks a question or a remark of, we got to find out who is going to opt in or opt out, to me, it's like, don't state the obvious. We already know that's going to happen. We're talking about the software, and the software is where we, where I really am excited, and I think your presentation was fantastic, and I want to thank you very much for being here today. Looking forward to moving forward.
Excellent.
We're going to the next agenda item.
I have comments, Chair.
We just closed discussion. Number six, vote to ratify a contract with MuniLink and utility billing for a five-year period with 3% annual increase for implementation of the software for solid waste and disposal. Water and sewer billing has cost $50,000 and $29,880 for first-year subscription for total year one, and $79,880 allowed the town manager to sign all related contract documents.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by, motion by Montigny, seconded by Dow.
By George Shinya, not Dow.
Any other, by George, was it George? By George Shinya, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the agenda item? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. You're doing a great job, Chair, here, but allow us to speak, because we're making decisions for the citizen. If you've been here for a long time, you're a smart guy, you can catch thing quick. I'm slow. I need my time to understand thing. So give me my time sometime to be able to ask question and understand what I'm going to vote on. Thank you.
I totally understand where you're coming from. I never want to shut any councilors off from open discussion or any citizens, but sarcasm and nonsense will not be allowed. Any other discussion?
This is a special meeting.
By any other council, please.
Special meeting, I--
You're out of order, Counselor Dow. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present?
I'm opposed.
Moving on?
Dow voted no.
Dow voted no. Moving on to agenda item number seven, vote to approve and ratify a contract with invoice, with an invoice cloud for payment gateway implementation with multilink and $100 a month, in an annual cost of $12,000--
$1,200.
Excuse me, $1,200, allowing town manager to sign all related documents--
So moved.
Contract.
Second.
Motion by Ari, seconded by Montigny. Discussion. No discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present?
No.
Eight to one. Moving on to eight, vote to appropriate $125,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund, number 0842, to the utility billing project for the implementation in first-year costs associated with the new billing management program for solid waste and disposal. Water and sewer programs to include software and consultant fees for the implementation of the program.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
To Town Manager, we're going to be taking $125,000 out of the capitalization stabilization fund. This is a one-time, this is a one-time appropriation?
From this account, yes. The further appropriations would be then split between water, sewer, and curbside enterprise funds--
In those--
For the subscriptions.